All right, I'd like to call to order the March 27th, 2023 Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Please take the role.
Thank you Chair. Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandoval.
Here.
Commissioner Badger.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Harrison.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so, item number three, approval of the February 27th, 2023 meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those? Not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Is there anybody either in person, which doesn't appear we have anybody in person, or online that would like to make a public comment for anything that is not on tonight's agenda?
Um, no public comment has been received by 4:00 PM today, and no attendees is seen in virtual audience so far.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, Sound Transit Project Update.
Good evening. Can everyone hear us?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. I'm gonna go ahead and get started then. We've got a pretty straightforward presentation today. It's been a while since we've been here, so a lot of exciting things happening. I'll go ahead and share this and we'll get into it. Thank you Commissioners for having us here this evening. Pretty excited to talk to y'all. So, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Looks like it. All right, great. If I can just get this to work. So, good evening again. My name is Eric Ashley-Vinka. I'm the Government and Community Relations Director for the North Corridor. For those of you that don't know me, I work on Lynwood Link and Everett Link. That's what the title implies. With me today is Josh Patagus. He's our Lynwood Link Extension Deputy Executive Project Director. He'll be presenting some with me this evening. So, here's just a look at what we're gonna talk about. Obviously, we wanna talk about the project timeline, construction updates where we're at, just an update on the artworks since last time we were here. We'll talk a little bit about just the transit connections with our partners and what that looks like. We'll highlight the Series 2 vehicles, the newest vehicles, if you haven't had a chance to ride them yet, and we'll then take questions. But if you have questions throughout, just feel free to stop us and we'll be happy to do that for you. So, from the last time we were here, we've continued to plug away, and this is just a overview of what the project timeline looks like. The thing that I wanna highlight is that we are right here in the end of this. Systems installation's a full go. Josh, I don't know if you wanna speak a little bit to this. You might on the next slide, but we're really just about, just about a year and a half out from this, give or take a few months, and things are starting to really come together with that, and so we're super excited where we're going. We'll take a look at this slide here, and Josh, why don't you just go ahead and talk a little bit about what we've done and what we're working on in this final stretch?
Yeah, thanks Eric. Hello, hello everyone. Thanks for having us this evening. And Eric, if you don't mind, go back to the, to the previous slide. Yeah, so Eric, Eric touched on everything, you know, where we are, but I would say the majority of the work that the general public will see should be wrapping up probably at the end of this calendar year. There's of course gonna be, you know, the system installation, we have the system activation, rail activation, so on. That'll all be happening up on the guideway, but I'd say the predominant work that, that, you know, the city officials and your patrons will see will, will more or less should be wrapping up around Q4 of this year. And if you wanna go to the next slide? Thanks. This just gives a quick synopsis of what we've done in the past, you know, the columns, girders, walls, the I-5 crossing, it's, we call it the G-Bridge. That's that big S-turn that goes over right out of the Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center. That's all kinda in our rearview mirrors. The, we've been focusing last, over the last year on the track work. We're pretty much done with the track work, track work, and that starts from the connection down at North Gate Station all the way up into Lynwood. There's one last stretch, kinda just north of the 220th area. That bridge, that L-bridge, it goes in the Lynwood, that, that's all complete, complete, so it's more or less from the Lynwood, you know, line down to about 220th. That's the last stretch that we have. Systems work, as you can see, you're driving up and down the freeway, you know, they're hanging the OCS, they're pulling interduct, pulling the fiber optic comms, so on, so that's all well underway. They're about 50% complete. Parking ride activation, you know, the, anyone that's been out at the Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center there, they're, they're targeting this summer to try to get that complete and signed off by all parties, so that's, that's exciting news. The station's well underway. The Mount Lake Terrace Station's actually, out of the four that we have, is probably the furthest along. They're gonna start looking at doing their punch list in May and June, so that's, that's exciting for us, 'cause trying to bring four stations online at the same time at the end of the project is a pretty, pretty hard task, so we're trying to kinda stage them out, and it would be Mount Lake Terrace, Lynwood, and the two to the south, then quite a bit of site restoration throughout. Next slide please. So this is the I-5 crossing, this is the notorious G-Bridge. Probably the riskiest piece of work that we had on the project from the onset, you know, quite a bit of overlap with the city of Mount Lake Terrace, WashDOT, and quite a few of our other partners, and went off pretty much without, without, without a hitch. Their track work is now on it, there's the OCS poles are up, and I believe they're starting to string, string OCS wire as well. And does everyone know, you could see it in the background there, this is looking south, so I'm hovering my pointer over this, but it's, there it is. So yeah, that's the parking garage in where the station will be. And like Eric said, if anyone has any questions, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, just real quick, I'll say that, yeah, when, when Josh is talking, he can talk technical all day, and so if you hear an acronym or something, that just feel free to speak up, 'cause a lot of this stuff, it's easy to just, we say it every day in and day out, so let us know.
Can you clarify what an OCS pole is?
So it's the overhead cantenary line. So that is what actually electrifies the trains, the LRVs. So it's the, it's basically the copper wire that is strung above the track. All right, so yeah, and just some of the track construction, here's just a few pictures. You've got on the left there, that's a direct fixation track, you know, for us that are constantly talking about it, you'll hear the word DF track. This is where the track is fixed to, these are all typically on our structures, you know, any of the bridges or elevated guideways there. In the middle is the ballasted track. This is just north of the 228th. You can see the overcrossing in the background there, and that's where it's, you know, it's basically essentially flooded with rocks, so it's floating, but that's what the, the track ties there in the rail. And then on the right is, it's a double crossover. As you go in, this is what allows the trains to cross from the southbound to the northbound track. This one is located up at Lynwood. There's one in Mount Lake Terrace that is built in ballast, similar to the, the center picture there, and we've got four of these throughout the eight miles. There's two, there's one in Shoreline, one in, in Seattle, one in Montlake. Actually, there's one in every city now that I think about it. So yeah, this, this helps, this is also good if there's ever a, if, if a train or ever breaks down, it allows, you know, the trains to transfer to the other tracks, so it'll kinda minimize the impact that it would have to the revenue service. Next slide please. Here's some of the systems work, and there you can see on the left there, that's the overhead cantenary, you know, the tracks there. There's the OCS or the overhead cantenary system pole, and then you can see the actual contact wires are already been strung. In the center there, that's, um, this is just the systems duct bank. This carries, this runs the entire length of the, of the guideway. It's about three-on-three, so there's three four-inch conduits. Those are filled with anything from fiber optic, signals, comms. We have a few spares in there too for future, you know, future expansion. And then on the right, that's just a comms closet, essentially the, the brain that everything talks to. These are, these are generally located in the stations. At the Mount Lake Terrace, it would be on the, we call it the ancillary building. It's the structure to the south of 236th. Next slide please. Here's just a rendering. This is, we've used this, I think I heard Christie's voice in the crowd there. We use this quite a bit to, to kinda show what it's gonna look like. You could see the existing, where it says bus loop there on the top. There are existing parking garages on the, the top part of the, the rendering, and this is what they're, they're actively building right now. So the buses will come in on the, call it the top side of the page, they'll loop down and around, and then exit out of the, I guess it would be the eastern entrance. Actually, I'm wrong. They'll come in the eastern entrance and then loop back out down closer by I-5. Parking lot, you've got the station area, you know, the, that where it says Site C, that's the, the mill stream site. We've been working with them quite a bit as looking at, you know, getting that site restored and then hand it over to them so that they could start their construction. Any questions on this one?
Go ahead.
Uh, yes. I know there's been some discussion about improvements to Veterans Park and also connection between that park and possibly 236th and the park and ride and the train station. Is this part of this presentation, or is that within the scope of this?
So, yeah, good question. So the, the city is where it says Veterans Park there. The city is constructing the trailway through the, the Veterans Park. Then we're gonna pick up, it's kinda where that yellow area is, that's, you know, just below the tree line there. We will connect to the, to the, the trail that comes out of the park, and can't really zoom in, but about halfway through the page, you can see there's like a crosswalk going right up the middle. There'll be a staircase there, and that's where people will be able to enter into the, the Transit Center. And then there's an extension that will tie into 236. We're working with, with the city on that. I, I don't wanna speak for the city, but I believe that we're looking at some of the enhancement funds to extend that down to 236 to make the connection.
Thank you.
All right. Next slide please. Here's one of the aerials. This is actually dated. It's probably, I'd say this is about two months old. If you look down where the bus loop will be, kinda that dirt area in the top middle, all of that has been removed now, and they're looking, they're actually in final site grading. They're gonna, we'll start seeing asphalt being placed in curb and gutter here, and then I'd say in the next two weeks, but it's just a good shot. There's the, there's the access road down, what we said, that's at the bottom of the page, that's into the ancillary building. That's where most of our, our ops and facilities groups will be going to service. That's where the comm room, the electrical rooms, the signal rooms, all of that is located on the south side. But yeah, this is a good shot. I think we've got a few more in here. Here's another rendering. This is looking, call it southwest. This would actually be almost from the treetops of Veterans Park, looking down at the station. There'll be escalators on both sides of 236 and elevator tower. The, it's the orange, kinda the, the burnt orange color that those two towers are the elevators, and then you could see underneath the guideway underneath the station there, kinda at a 45, there's an escalator on the north side and an escalator on the south side. So that's nice. It'll make it so that people won't have to actually cross the street if they're trying to go south or get back into the parking garage. Next slide. This is another actual shot, so this is looking straight west from 2, 236. The, like I said, this, this, this station is actually even further. I, we were out there on Friday, and they had the lights on, uh, under the canopies. Most, they're working on the platform itself right now. They're putting in the pavers and putting in the top, uh, the topping slab for where you would actually enter in and out of the train. They're starting to commission various elements throughout the station. So again, this is, this is the first one that, that we're gonna look to get signed off by, you know, not only the city, but we have to go through a fairly extensive process with, with our own internal group, you know, KCM. They're gonna be the ones who will be operating and maintaining this, but along with our, our facilities teams and our operations team.
And I'll just point out the obvious. When we say KCM, King County Metro.
Sorry. Next slide please. Here's another rendering. This is looking east, you know, up to 236. Quite, this is a pretty elaborate art scheme. It's, and I think there's a slide or two in here, and it looks like, almost like a, like a forest or a tree. And in the next slide, you'll see it's a bunch of dimpled, they're able to dimple the D of the, the panels, these metal panels, and on the left there, you can see that they're raised. So, because we have Buy America, you know, obligations on this contract, all the material that was, material was sourced, but our art budget is from a different budget. So we, the only person who does this type of artwork is in Canada, so all the panels were fabricated here and then shipped to Canada, and that process, they're, they're, they could rotate these, these, I call them punches, dimples, in 16 different angles, and as you stand back from that, that's what kinda represents or makes the artwork. It's, um, anyone that hasn't driven, driven, you know, through the area, definitely do it during the day. It's, it's, it's a, I've never seen something this elaborate in all my years doing this, and it looks pretty cool, so it's, I think it's gonna be a good feature, you know, right there at 236. Uh, some of the upcoming activities that we have, we have, you know, a lot of the station mechanical electrical plumbing, we call it MEP systems. That's, like I said, a lot of that is being, being commissioned as we speak. Station art, station architectural finishes, that's everything down on, around the ground, that's, you know, around the, you know, I, the Transit Center or the campus. Artwork is ongoing, the track work we discussed, same thing with the systems. A lot of the paving and hardscape, that's not just gonna be at the Transit Center. We've got, you know, we've, we've already installed quite a bit of our roadways, sidewalks, you know, throughout, but a lot of that is gonna happen, you know, in this construction season, this summer season, and then of course, the landscaping and planning, that's happening up and down the alignment right now, 'cause we're in the planting season.
And so, Josh, if you could just speak a little bit to, when, when are folks actually gonna see trains moving when we're doing testing?
That's a good question. We just had a, we just had a, a large meeting with, so we have two civil contractors for the, for those that don't know the layout of this project. So we have, it's about eight miles long, you know, it's essentially, it's, it's four and four, so right at the county line is where we split the two projects. L-200 is, is Seattle and Shoreline. L-300 is Mount Lake Terrace and Lynwood. And then we have a systems contractor, that's L-800. They, they're the ones who are doing all the systems work, so we're looking at starting to bring in clearance carts around the September timeframe, and following that, you know, there's, we call them the systems integration testing. I would say, you know, Q4, middle to end of Q4, we'll bring in, they tow one of the LRVs to make sure that everything fits, and they could go through the interlocking. This is a good, actually, a good picture to show that, just to make sure they'd go at low speeds through all the switches to ensure that they could, you know, they could transfer from one track to the next. And I would say by the, by around that November timeframe, it's a very technical term, we call it the spark test. It's typically done at night. They, they'll, they'll energize the overhead cantenary system and then start actually running the, the trains, and there they'll go through the whole cycle of it, you know, everything from the signals, the comms, and make sure everything, everything is actively working. They could, they could switch the, you know, there's, where the two gentlemen are right in the front, that's actually one of the switch points, and they could control those remotely, so they'll start doing all of that testing, you know, in that Q3, Q4 of this year.
Yeah, thanks. I, I just asked that because I think that as people start to look at it more and more every day, it looks like it's, starting to look like it's finished, right? And then once you see those test trains, then we really start to have folks in the city, for folks in the neighborhood saying, hey, I see trains, is it open yet? And that's, we have to make sure that it's safe before we actually get there, but I, I just wanted to highlight that.
Well, that, that's a good point, because our, our systems group will be, their, their substantial completion is, is roughly the end of January of '24, but then we go into a six-month rail activation, and that's where we, as they call it the contractors, we support our facilities operations in the King County Metro who, who operate the trains. We support them, but then they have a whole gamut of tests that they cycle through for roughly six months. And that's, again, I mean, that's, that's, I know everyone wants to be on the train, but that's, that's, that's the safety cycles that we have to go through, you know, before we can actually commission this and get this into revenue service. Next slide. And, you know, some more of the, the future activities. We have, you know, the systems testing and activation, that's what I was talking about earlier. We, we work with the South Snohomish Fire quite a bit. We'll have the first responder training, you know, we do that with all of our first responders throughout, you know, to get them antiquated to the, to the new system. The, part of that rail activation is also the operator familiarization process, and then they do simulated service, and that simulated services is, is a pretty cool activity where they'll actually bring people on the train to revenue service. They'll get off at North Gate, and then typically they'll just carry the train north, and that allows the, the operators to become familiar and simulate the service, you know, for the Lynwood Link. Safety certification, of course, and then the final activity is, is revenue service. This is you, right Eric?
Yeah, so I'll take it over from here. I just wanna pause real quick and see if anyone had any questions before we kinda talk a little bit about what we're doing with our partners and what the system's gonna look like on a large scale.
I have a real quick, kind of deep in the weeds question. I know City Lights Electrical Service Engineers were handling the L-200 projects. How does, how does the power transfer happen when it crosses over outside of City Lights' territory?
Yeah, another good question. So that, this is the first time we're gonna be working with SnowPod. So SnowPod is, so it's the Traction Power Substation, you'll hear TPSS, so there's six of them throughout. There's three south of Mount Lake Terrace, and then three north of Mount Lake Terrace. And so we've, we've been working with SnowPod now for going on seven years, so all of the, I just call it the backbone or the infrastructure, all of that is in. It's been signed off and tagged, ready to receive the Traction Power Substations. We should be receiving the first one in Montlake, I'd say within the next six weeks, and that's gonna be the one that's right there at Mount Lake Terrace Station. And, so yeah, so north of the county line is SnowPod, south, you know, King County and south is, is SCL.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
I also had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know there was a couple of hiccups that were sort of discovered in East Link, and it may have set their construction back a bit. Do you, are we pretty much past that for the Lynwood Link or at this point, or are there other potential problems we might wind up coming across, things we should be mindful of? I imagine the risk gets smaller and smaller as we get closer to opening, but I was curious if there was anything you were watching out for?
It's never done till it's done, right? You know, it's, it's one of those questions. There's always challenges. The, the, the plant issue that they, they experienced on East Link, we, we do not have that. You know, we, it's a, a lot of it had to do with, with not having the proper rebar. We've, since that incident, you know, we've, we've verified everything that we have on, on Lynwood, you know, for the eight miles. You know, we've experienced some of our own issues, but, but most of them, we've, we've, we've been able to, you know, kinda course correct or pivot off of that, and we've been able to maintain our schedule. We currently have, you know, 59 days afloat still on our schedule, and that's for where we are. We're at, the project's just over 85% done, so that's, that's a, that's definitely a positive. There are, there are some minor things that we'll find, like we have a little drainage inlet, you know, item that we found that was too close to one of the, one of the trackways, but nothing, you know, no pun intended, but nothing that's gonna, that we foresee derailing us. But there's, there could always be something, right? You know, there could be a short in one of the systems. We, we plan enough float in our, in our, in our schedule and our contractors, most, you know, they've all done this before, that they've got, they've got time to figure out if there's any, any hiccups in the system, but once, now that we're out of the ground, you know, we hit a couple of differing site conditions, you know, in, in the Lynwood area that were fairly significant, you know, but we were able to, we were able to work through it, you know, and start in other areas while we finish those. But, you know, all of that, call it, everything subgrade is done, and those are where you find most of those unknowns. There could be the one-off where one of the down guys for the, for that overhead cantenary system might be encroaching into the, into the guideway, but right now, we don't see anything that's large, not to say something might not happen, but, you know, as I'm saying all this, I'm knocking on the bottom of my desk, but, but we're, we're not fully there yet, but what we do know now is we're, we're pretty comfortable with where we stand.
I think one thing that's important to point out too is that our team in particular has been able to take lessons learned from all the previous projects that have had issues, and we've got a really dedicated team out there working in, in this, this region, and I think that's, you know, can't, can't go without giving Josh and his team some credit on that, 'cause it's, it's really important when you have a team out there that's working as hard as they are. I, I would also mention that in terms of, since you mentioned East Link, you know, the biggest challenge I think that we're gonna face on Lynwood Link is just that squeeze, you know, wait, before we actually get that operation and maintenance facility open on, over in Bellevue for East Link. That's going to be part of, you know, the constraints that we have. If you recall from the last time we're here, those of you that were here, you know, we talked about four-minute headways at Lynwood, and because, because of those constraints on how many cars we actually have access to store and work on, we're gonna have eight-to-10 minute headways here to start, and until we, we really start to open that up on the, the OMF on the east and then the others that'll come online, it's, it's always going to be a struggle, just because people are using the system, which is great. But I, I think that that's, that coupled with what we, we're looking at for service with competing with the Revive I-5 that WashDOT's doing, if you're not familiar with that work, it's just a, a lot of very needed work that WashDOT's been trying to do forever on I-5 that will affect, you know, everyday traffic. So, you know, we're mindful of that and just trying to work with, with everyone on our partners, which I think kinda goes into this slide here. I won't spend too much time on it, but really just wanna point out that with our partners, you know, when I'm talking to, to this group, you know, I'll just say KCM, King County Metro, and CT with Community Transit, we, we have so much that we have to do working together to make sure that we're building a system, because if, if you get on our light rail and it's the best thing you, you've ever experienced, and you get off and it's a, the worst bus ride ever on, you know, another, you know, a KCM or CT, we're not doing our job as an agency, and so we coordinate with them constantly. You see here is, you know, what that network for light rail looks like in conjunction to what service is gonna be there for Swift Rapid, or the bus Rapid Transit for Swift. That CT is blue, green, and orange line. The orange line comes online next year, and so we continue to do a lot of outreach with both of those transit partners, because what we're trying to do is get people aware of, hey, when this service comes online, this is how you continue to get to work. This is what it looks like. And it's, we've, I think we've done a pretty good job on that front, but we're still doing a lot of that up until we actually make this change in Lynwood Link opens. Have I been on mute?
No.
Okay, I just, I just went over here and it muted me, and I was like, I've been on mute a long time. Thanks. Okay, so, next slide. Here's just another example of what the system looks like with the buildout. Thanks to that coordination, you're gonna have a whole bunch of service. You know, the thing that I tell everybody about, the, the great thing with Lynwood Link opening is that it allows our partners to shift that service that used to go downtown to Seattle, that used to go down to North Gate, and it gets to go east-west now. All of a sudden, when you couldn't catch a bus here before, now you can, and that's, that's really where it starts to make transit more feasible for everyone, 'cause I certainly, I've talked to some of you about how frustrating it is if you have, if it takes three different rides to get where you're going. That's not always feasible, right? And so we've really tried to work hard with our partners so that as we open up more service, we're And so we've really tried to work hard with our partners so that uh as we open up more service, we're actually offering a broader range of where you can go and how you get there. Uh, this is just another overview of this. Um, you know, Josh, I'll have you talk to this one because I really, I I. I don't know what what we haven't covered in the earlier slide on this. So if there's something you want to highlight, let's go ahead and do that.
I think this is really just showing the various points of access. You know, I think one one of the gentlemen asked about the Veterans Trail. You can see where that orange circle is. You know, that's where the from where you guys are now at the city, at the town hall. It'll take the network of trails through Veterans Park, it'll connect on that purple. And then all the green is all ADA accessible um routes. In and around and through the transit center and along two thirty six, you know, the. Light shaded bluish purple, you know, that's that's the, we call it fifty ninth place, but that's that mill stream development that's that's teeing up to go in right when we get out of there. Um, it's really, I think this is mainly just showing the various, you know, pedestrian routes throughout the the transit center.
And then Josh, did you want to talk about the series two vehicles, any of the? Highlights that you wanted to, I mean, other than looking great and the big windows, uh, I I they're they're roomier. I think that. People are really going to like them if they haven't had a chance, but if there's anything you want to add about that.
No, I mean, I think it's just, you know, we're going to get new cars. You know, it's everyone likes a new car, so they are, we've. I want to say there's a hundred, there's a hundred and forty of them coming in and that's that's not only to service Linwood, but that's for East Link, that's for Federal Way, the Redmond Extension. Um, so yeah, they're coming in, they're Siemens cars and they're. We're receiving them on a regular basis now, but you know, you've touched on all of it. They're gonna. They're going to be more comfortable and provide a better view because. There are some great views from Linwood that we've. We've talked with our media relations folks quite a bit and they're they're very excited to see, you know, that it's the F Bridge. Is the one right there at the southern end of Mont Lake Terrace. You know, it's got, it's you're about seventy five feet up in the air, then you go down to the shoreline, the one right by Jackson Park, uh, the golf course. It's uh, it'll be a nice ride, but yeah, not not too much more to, I don't know enough about the trains. Get that deep into them. I gotta build it.
Fair enough. Uh, so with that, I'll I'll make, I think everybody already has the presentation, but would like to have a conversation. Answer any questions that you may have because we just really wanted to focus on the the near term and what's happening over this next year.
So I've got a few questions. Um, going back to what we just talked about, the the new light rail cars. Is this just adding to the current fleet or any of these new cars replacing existing cars?
Adding to.
Adding to, okay. And then for the artwork, um, it might just be the time that I go by it. It's usually in the morning and, you know, when. Since they installed it, it's been winter. I find it really hard to actually see the artwork. Is it, is this more of a case where, you know, in the middle of the day when the sun's directly hitting it, it's easier to see the 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 actual artwork design?
Yeah, I think that the reflection of the sun will will definitely accentuate it. Um. It is something, you know, when you're paying attention to the road and and trying to look at, you know, we've. I'd rather you look at the, look at the road, but um, yeah, when when I walked through there on. It was Friday and it was probably late morning and you can you could see it well. I mean, we were on the street, you know, just standing there, you know, we weren't in a in a moving vehicle. Um, and as you get up to it, you know, you could, it starts to pop a little bit more, but no, it it's definitely there. Um. It is a. Their D M P panels, uh, so their metal panels, I mean, it's not an actual. Painting on it, but.
Yeah, but I I think uh to Chair Batista's point, uh, I noticed the same thing and then I got a chance to actually go there in person a couple of weeks ago and. Uh, I think the same thing there is, it's when you're wa- like for people actually using the system, that's really where it it pops.
Okay. And then um, another kind of related question, it's something that we've talked about in the past and it's always kind of been a we're. We're thinking of ideas, but we don't know, but um, how to still utilize the inline station? Is there, is there any plans on the books right now to keep that functional and operational?
The N station.
The 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 current bus station in the middle of the freeway.
That. Is, I mean, that's that that's owned and operated by C T, so I don't, I don't, I don't know what their long term. Plan is for that. That's, that's not a sound transit asset.
Okay.
So yeah, I I couldn't, I I couldn't give you a definitive answer on that.
Yeah, and if I recall, I I I thought there there's maybe some some work being done with Wash Dot to talk through it, but uh, I could certainly get back to you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, the garage, there's there's discussions with the garage because the garage. Is owned by Wash Dot, operated by C T and there's discussions between Sound Transit and C T about us possibly taking over control of that. But that. That's more of an agency. Question right now and it's like an operations and facilities, whether or not they are gonna. They're going to take that over as far, and it's budgetary concerns or the the Linwood, you know, the L L E, the Linwood. Link extension budget is we're, our budget is for, you know, building the alignment, not, you know, purchasing the new assets, but that that's. That is actively being discussed right now, but there is, there's not a timetable of when or or if that will happen.
Commissioner Betcher?
Thanks. Um, I have um many comments on the C T um. Things, but they're probably for community transit. Um, I did have a, I am looking forward to, I think um, this will be a nice gateway to Snohomish County. Because the light rail is sort of boring as it goes through shoreline, it just kinds of runs along the interstate, but as you cross the county line, it comes up and then you can see. Rainier over Terrace Station and then you come to our station, which is nice, and then you go through the uh. The trees down over to the two twentieth bridge where you'll have panoramic views of the. Olympics and then you come around and then suddenly you've got panoramic views of Cascades, so I'm, you know, looking forward to see what, seeing what kind of marketing shots come out of this. Because I think there are several locations. That um will sort of showcase the train. Um, I did have a couple of operational questions. Um, I know there's uh some. Land that uh commu- that uh is currently being used for construction that'll be transferred over. At some point, um, I think uh the area around two twenty street station, if I remember right, is probably still going to stay a community transit for a while. But then there's also a section uh a little bit south that I think was going to become a park for Melody Hill. Um, what is the timeline for that kind of thing and how is that sort of shaping up? And is this still pretty much what's happening?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not familiar with any land, so so the area directly that. The major construction yard there at two twentieth, there is a, there is a, there's a park that. What is that, two twenty second to the south of that, that there was a few homes there that that had to be removed. That's gonna, there's gonna be a strip of park, it kind of nineties. I guess it goes what, east and nineties, is that? Two twenty second? I believe.
Yeah.
There's a small park there, the that construction yard right now, I mean, there is, there is still, I mean, that's Sound Transit purchased that property. So there's, there's, right now, we're not looking to dedicate that. That's actually got, there's conversations that that may be a future infill station, not in the S T two, potentially S T three. Um, but. There currently, there's no, that that's, that's, that's going to stay with with Sound Transit for the time being.
Okay, and then the area to the south of that, that's around the two twenty second, um, that will wind up becoming a park still at some point?
Yeah, that that's, that that, that area is 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 in the books to be dedicated over to the city. And that we did some. Some artistic kind of, there's like a tree scape, um, the panels, the concrete panels there that separate, you know, the park from the. From the guideway itself, those were were done with a different aesthetic. Um, but yeah, that strip of land. It's there, it's 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 a construction access now, but in the very near future, they'll they'll pull out all of their gear. And yeah, that area will be a park, yes.
Fantastic. I know there aren't a lot of parks in that neighborhood, so we're definitely looking forward to that. Uh, I'm glad that is able to be worked out. Um, and then uh, I know there's uh some operation, I think um Chair Batista asked a couple of or a question about um. Uh, the electrical service for when you transfer the county line. Um. I'm also curious if we worked out um who's going to be doing operations and things like uh policing and fair ambassadorship and especially unlocking the bathroom. In the Mount Lake Terrace Station. Um, does that all handled through Sound Transit itself or is that uh through local agreements with other jurisdictions?
Yeah, in the, in the, in the, in and around the stations, that that'll be, you know, called policed, so to say. By our, by our, by our transit, you know, authorities and then, you know, the fair ambassadors as well, that will all be handled in house with with the with. Our with our forces from Sound Transit.
But I think it's also important to note that um as these, you know, as we're getting ready for revenue service. We're working with the city to to work through those issues as well because it's. If, for example, if there's someone that's on the train that needs to be removed for whatever reason and they are removed. It's not as simple as you don't just take them off the train onto the. The guideway and then leave it like that, right? So we have to work with our jurisdiction to make sure that everyone's playing together and. Uh, we're doing the best that we can for our riders.
Yeah, and and that's a good point, Eric. I mean, we we've had a pretty strong relationship with with all the police services, you know, throughout all the cities. I mentioned, you know, South Snow as well. You know, we're, we're actually actively working with, we have a meeting, I think it's been a week to start looking at the O and M agreements. And, you know, long term, you know, maintenance of the areas because there are some. Just to center in on the Mont Lake Terrace, you know, Transit Center, there's a couple of deep storm structures there that are that are owned and operated by by the city. So we'll have to work through the various agreements, you know, with the city and, you know, providing access and providing easements and so on.
Does anybody else have any questions? I've got one more and I. Completely understand if you're not able to answer it, but since Commissioner Betcher brought up Melody Hill. Uh, I had, I I was debating whether or not to ask this question, but when it comes to the infill station. Um, is is that still on Sound Transit's radar as a as a possibility of creating a two twentieth station? And if if it is, what? What 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 would that timeline roughly look like um to have something like that uh be operational and added to the network?
I'll take that and then let Josh correct me on the the details, but you know, honestly, at this point, uh, we've talked to the city about this, we we know. That there's interest, we, I mean, wha- whatever that land is used for is going to be a good piece of land, right? Whether it's T O D, whether it's a light rail station, whether it's a mix of both. Um, you know, for us right now, I I would say we're really focused on S T three and getting, you know, the projects that we're committed to. Finish first and when we talk about that timeline. You know, it's it's out into the early twenty forties, right? Talking about Everett Link, you know, link out to Issaquah. Um, and. With that said, uh, you know, if we, if there was an S T four, if there was uh an appetite for an infill station within S T three, I don't, I don't really know the logistics on that today. Um, my guess is it would be pretty far down that line. So nothing definitive, but I I just, I I would say that's probably not in the near term, but um, the city's been a really good partner with us. We want to make sure that. We're, we're just operating in in good relationships with them, so. That's what I can tell you. Josh, what did I miss there or what did I just absolutely get wrong?
No, no, you you nailed it. I mean, it's, it's. It's. It's always been on the, there there's discussions, right? And that's why, you know, I answered the way I did it earlier. It's. It's we're, because of that, that property is is a good spot, you know, for for a future infill station. It's just right now. The commitments are with with everything that Eric just said, so to give a hard, a hard date, you know, that's. That that's hot, that that's, that's not something that. I think anyone has right now, but. It's an option, right? It's always an option.
If, say there's another package like an S T four, since the line already runs through there. Would an infill station be? Could be like an early deliverable of like an S T four, whereas it, you know, it's not, you know, it'd be something that could be handled, you know. Fairly quickly since most of the, you know, I could say about half the infrastructure is already there. And, you know, the lands are, you know, already cleared out and S T a- as of right now s- still has it versus. Not bringing that type of infill station operational until the rest of a potential S T four was ready to go online.
It would definitely make it an an easier venture. It's just, again, ultimately it would be what. What the board decides, right? And and, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of cities and, you know, we were one of the ones pushing it to get, you know, get Linwood. Into Snohomish and or get, you know, into Mont Lake Terrace and Linwood, but. That's above my pay grade, not that I'm trying to deflect the the response, it's, it's. That, it's definitely in the cards, it's just the timeline is that that that's up to others.
Yeah, and I I would point out that if you look north to Everett Link, there's a provisional station there on Airport Road ninety nine. And that's, that's a station that in this early part of Everett Link, we're in phase one of it, the project right now. We're going to study all that up through, you know, a certain point and then we stop, we're ju- we're studying it, but we're not going to build, but it'll be set up. For a quicker access to build it in the future. Even though this was, I think, maybe on the table at one point with Melody Hill, once S T three went to the voters that didn't have that. And so it's not, it hasn't been studied yet, right? So the feasibility. Is is not as strong as it would be for another provisional station, but it's also. You know, somewhat ahead of the curve too as a a a station that does, there's no space or no, no one's made made up an idea about it yet.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I had a question that expands on your question.
Go ahead.
Um, so uh, what would the process um of. Uh, actually approving a station look like um if there is still feasibility studies to be done? And um, about how long does it take to build an infill station once that is decided?
You know.
Dennis, go ahead.
I mean, the feasibility, I mean, that it's, it's, it'd all be on ridership, right? Yeah, that's part of the feasibility is. Is it, is that where the funding would 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 reach the most people, right? So. A feasibility study would probably be a few years, I'd say two years, you know, for 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 a rough order of magnitude. To answer your question on, you know, once it's designed. You know, the, you know, and it works with with the property. Permitted so on roughly two years to to build it. We're building an infill station right now. Down in Seattle and it's got about a, about a two, two and a half year fuse on it, so. You know, rough, rough timeline. Due to that being, it would most likely be an at-grade station. Because it would have to be right very close to where that park is that we were just talking about. Because that's where the abutment of that, that's the H Bridge that goes over two twentieth. So. Uh, at-grade station is always going to be a lot quicker um than than something that's in the air. So I mean, for ru- ru- rough, rough schedule roughly two years, once it's designed and permitted.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm not hearing or seeing anything. Uh, thank you very much, guys.
I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
All right. So we'll go ahead. We'll let you guys get set up a little bit. And while we're getting set up, I'll muse on the fact that that inline station was an S T project. It was the last built. S T one project that they tried to not build. Yeah, so apparently community transit operates it now, but that that was an S T project. Uh, that they didn't want to build and for you newer folks, uh, Terrace, Linwood. Edmonds, I think even Briar all got together and said, no, you're going to build it. Because they 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 wanted, they wanted to. Back out of that, so. But they got built, but they also value engineered it, so. They built it in a way where they couldn't run the light rail. So that's why we now have. So that's why we now have an elevated light rail station because the original plan was to have that convert to the light rail station once the tracks were run up north.
I like that it's half a pedestrian bridge over the interstate, like almost just want to keep it going.
Yeah, yeah, there, there, there were, there were discussions or there were questioning on the last time we were looking at, leaving the town center plans, like why weren't we looking on the other side of the freeway as well? You know, it's a whole missed opportunity and one that will probably get a chance to revisit fairly soon and fairly soon, maybe within the next year or so.
The state might tell us to revisit it.
I'd just like to clarify a couple of things that were said, just so we're, they're correct.
Please fact check.
Okay, so the showing the access over the bus loop from the trail is no longer on the plans and hasn't been on the plans since 2019. And the reason that the trail goes out to 236 is because that's what the city requested. Because that bus loop right there, having people go across that access, people would, pedestrians would have to play Frogger with the buses coming right there. And then your access is down multiple sets of stairs. And so there's really, I, I like that we have ADA compliant stairs. I'm not sure what that is, but I would say trying to make it more ADA accessible where we're routing people that full length out to the sidewalk and coming down. So you're not interfacing with, with the bus loop right there. The buses are actually also going to come in down by the station and then come up and loop around by the bus loop up by the trail.
See, that's what I thought too. So when he said the opposite, I was like, oh, that's, that's a change.
I think Josh was just a little confused. So that's how they're coming in and then there's access for the vehicles going to and from that, the parking garage as well right there. So that's kind of how that will flow. The cars won't be able to come up to the bus loop. You know, they'll be going kind of like what it was somewhat before where you're either going to parking or you're going to the parking garage or the surface parking. Flyover station, as we've been told and CT is redoing their, their plans and such, but the flyover station, as far as I know, is remaining. And I know that there's been conversations about a long-term ownership and maintenance of the parking garage and all of those things, but as I know, as of today, the flyover station stays and that, that's been the intent. The park off of 222nd, so I call that Dootlinger Park because that's my mission before I retire. Edith Dootlinger was the planner here for 35 years, I believe, and she would always advocate for park property. So that's that little strip of land that had the houses right there. And so what we did is the city is we re-designated it land use wise and zoning wise so it can only be a park. So we don't own it, but, but there's nothing else that you can do with it. So the object of that is that basically get it dedicated to the city because it's pretty much unusable. That's the start of some park property on the west side of the city. And hopefully we can add some more property to that and look at kind of expanding that long-term so the folks over on that side of the city have, you know, even a place to go walk your dogs or sit at a bench or, or kind of just do something, but just have a little green space right there. And it's really not advantageous right there for residential. And so like Josh was saying, condition the permit so the sound wall, you can see it if you go over there, has a design that is trees on that side of where that future park property is going to be. So instead of just, I call it moss catcher, they're kind of standard variegated sound walls that kind of are ugly and get all dirty. But this is a little bit nicer and has kind of a, a tree motif on it. So anyways, that's kind of that. We just, we've completed the vacation for the 222nd. That's where they'll access for maintenance on the light rail, right there on the tracks. And then we're also in a process with Sound Transit of starting to go through and trying to finalize all the permits. So if you can imagine, there's, I don't know how many permits there are associated with Sound Transit, but let's just say a lot. And so we're, we have a tracking and a spreadsheet. And so now we're trying to systematically go through with them and close them all out and make sure all conditions of approval and everything is as it needs to be. So when we get right to, hey, we're ready to go online with the station, it's not like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, we have, you know, all these things to do. So trying to have a systematic approach this next year to get all that stuff closed out. So close with the heavy lifting on some things, but still have other things that we need to make sure that we're taking care of. So that's kind of my addition. I don't know if you guys have any other questions, but.
I was going to say, even though it's more of a hypothetical discussion right now with, you know, potential 220th station, I think that's the first time where I've heard that it would be shifted more towards 222nd than 220th. I would think you'd want the station more right on 220th. You get the east-west bus traffic, just let them off right there and you're letting them off right on, and you're right at the station as well. Might be a little tricky with the freeway on ramp and off ramp, but, you know, something, something could be engineered, but, and I just always assumed it would have been elevated. So he's saying more at-grade, further south. I don't know if that would actually affect ridership numbers or not. Hopefully after our new subarea plan, a lot of the ridership would be walking there anyway. It'd be in the neighborhood, but.
Yeah.
That's just, that's the first time I had heard that.
Yeah, I mean, I know that it's been a desire for that provisional station. I would just say, if you look at the timeline now, even Everett coming online or some of the other stations, these things are getting pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. And those are things that are in the process of getting designed and going through. So I, I would say if, if 220th gets ever constructed, I would say it's just a long way out. And that's just the reality. If we're talking Everett right now is 2034, 2036, I can't remember, you know, I mean, so think that, plus they're already designing the provisional sta- station out to get to Boeing. That's going to take precedence before we ever get a 220th station. So if I'm doing the math, I'm not holding my breath anytime soon. Can it happen? Yes. Do they own the property? Yes. I'm just saying to me, it seems like that timeline is, is out quite a ways from where we are right now. So not to be a buzzkill, but that's kind of.
That's why I was so upset when they took it off.
Yeah, that's kind of the, just the reality of, of the money and some of the problems they're running into to get to Ballard and to other places. You're trying in some of the stations, you're trying to get right away through, you know, areas that are urbanized and, and cost a lot of money. And so, you know, you just run into those problems and the further you go, you know, the costing of getting, these improvements just goes up and up and up. You know, we're, we swing around billion dollars for these projects like it's nothing, you know? So, I mean, you know, at, at what point, how much is getting light rail up to Everett really going to cost? You know, so.
Again, you know, everybody, I'm working for Shoreline and Interchange there. We work a lot with, you know, Sound Transit. And just the house values, you know, since we started there doubled.
Yeah.
So, you know, everybody, everybody knows, right, never? So there, you know, everybody that has a piece of property, it's going to double again. So, you know, a $500,000 house that was there like five years ago, it's going to be $2 million in a couple of years. And that's a reality and they have, you know, and they have to buy it.
Yeah.
If, you know.
Even more frustrating that Sound Transit already owns the land.
Yeah.
And the track is already there. You know, it's, it's, it's like you, you, you got two of the three parts you already got control of.
But it's the board and it's politics and it's, you know, it's all the things that go to make, you know, getting a transportation project like this. You know, it's just, it's not easy. So doesn't mean we can't, you know, keep trying for that. It should just, I, when I look at a crystal ball, I'm like, hmm, you know, I'm going to do the best job I can for this light rail station. We're going to get the best artwork. We're going to get the best that we can get. I'm going to squeeze every trail out of it and everything we possibly can as we've worked hard to do. But at the end of the day, I just think 220th is a long ways away. So that's where we are.
It's going to stop us from presuming that it'll be there at some point.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's long-range planning, right? And so, I mean, that definitely can still be a part of the, the subarea planning efforts on our part as well, so.
In the meantime, in the meantime, it's a ground station so you can just stand on the side of the train and stick out your thumb and see.
And they're going to stop for you?
Yeah. If they do it enough, you'll be able to station there. I had a question about, sort of for you, about coordination with the parks on the Veterans Trail project. I know I recently attended one of their planning sessions for it and it looks like they've got a pretty detailed trail system mapped out. In my opinion, as somebody who bikes through there and will probably use it as a link to go through Veterans Park and through the transit station to the Lakeview Trail in like the many kinds of bike errands I do, the trails are all a little narrow. I was curious if you had been coordinating with the Parks Department on sort of the actual physical infrastructure and some of the requirements for that, or if that's something that you regularly discuss?
Yeah, we do and we're part of the permitting for the trail going through. And that's, that, that's absolutely the intent is that although there are portions of Veterans Park that we want to retain as a natural area, there's also portions for, to be utilized by the community for different things in the park. And so making sure that it's, there's some activated space for people to use and also how we construct the trails to make sure people feel safe going through Veterans Park to use it as a trail to get the, to light rail. So adequately lit and making it more ADA accessible so more people can use that trail. But absolutely, that's all a part of linking the trail through vets to come all the way out to 236th and then also have the pedestrian plaza on the other side of 236th. So all that integrates with the Lakeview Trail and, and, yep, that's the whole intent.
Great, I'm glad we're all on this together. I like to hear that.
We're trying, yeah, so absolutely. And trying to get that, coordinating that with, Josh talked a lot about Millstream, that property that's going to be developed adjacent. So as that's coming through, what is a portion of their property where that parking lot exists now? So you should start seeing movement potentially sometime this summer of where that west wall is going to come down and we start moving that surface parking back to the surface lot with the exception of a few spaces for mobilization for the light rail station. But other than that, that the parking lot, you'll start to see that going away within the next few months. And when they're, and the intent right now is to open the bus loop up in about September. So then the bus loop won't be needed in the temporary parking lot. It will be moved back to where it's going to be.
Will we still have that nice giant Jersey barrier that like protects the pedestrian and bike lane from the traffic as it comes up to the Transit Center?
We should, we should, yeah. I mean, all of that before all of those improvements, you know, get finalized is going to be really important. I know that there's also a signal pole right as you come, currently in discussions, right as you come, what will be the trail? And so that needs to be moved and some other things of where Main Street Phase One was designed without knowing that we were going to push to have the trail come out to the sidewalk and, you know, just different things like that, but just trying to all coordinate together so that works.
All right, anybody else? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number six, a review of development activities update.
All right, hello everyone. My name is Sarah Pizzo. I'm an associate planner here. I started in June, so for those of you I haven't met yet, it's nice to meet you all. All right, so today I'm going to be going over updates for community and economic development from 2022. So there are 26 projects that have an update from last year. And so here's a list, but we'll go through each one individually. All right, so 212 planned unit development. This is a project that divided 1.23 acres into eight single household lots. The project includes a privately owned and maintained park with public access, a new city street and protection of critical slopes. The land use permits were approved and civil permit is currently under review.
I'll just kind of butt in to just kind of, for those that aren't aware, how we go through our permitting. So first you're going to go through land use approval, then you're going to go through civil review, and then lastly, you're going to go through building permit review. So we're just, when we say those statuses, you can kind of get an idea of where we are, where people are at with the, in kind of in the review.
Is that sequential and is that for anything where you're dividing the land?
Yes, yeah.
What was your second question?
Oh, is that mostly just for something where you're dividing the land?
Okay.
Or redeveloping a site.
Site plan review.
Major land use decisions.
Right.
We, we saw this one, didn't we?
It's been kicking.
Yeah.
It kind of came back alive, so.
Well, I was going to say, because it's been a while.
It's just, yeah, status update of kind of things that have changed since we talked about them last.
Great, so the 222nd street vacation Christie mentioned when we were talking about Sound Transit. So this was approved and it's just pending the final recording. So this provides access to the, the light rail guideway for, for maintenance. 234th street townhomes. This project is to divide .16 acres into five fee simple lots subdivision for five townhomes with access off of 55th Avenue West. And this project is currently under construction. Alter Townhomes is another townhome project that includes 12 townhomes across two buildings. They share an outdoor space and frontage improvements along both 216th Place Southwest and 50th Avenue West are part of this project. And that's almost done, just awaiting final closeout. The Ballenger Park Trail and ADA Playground. The trail was completed in 2022. And that's a 1,600-foot-long asphalt trail between the Ballenger Park Clubhouse slash Senior Center Parking Lot and the Boat Launch Parking Lot. And the playground is almost complete. There's just some final work they need to do that's anticipated for spring of this year. Cedar Park Townhomes is another fee simple development on 54th. This one divides the land into 52 townhomes, includes an internal road network, frontage improvements and pedestrian connections. This land use was approved, the preliminary land use approval has happened and then civil construction or the civil permit is currently under review.
What does fee simple mean? Fee simple development?
Fee simple is a mechanism to dis- subdivide property when you have attached wall construction. So it allows you to have a separate legal lot of record where these are considered So it allows you to have a separate legal lot of record where these are considered, even though they're adjoining walls, they're considered a separate legal lot of record, and they're considered a single-family residential unit. So it's not typical, your typical subdivision, you'd have a side yard setback and those type of things. So this is a mechanism when you're doing like a townhome development.
Thank you.
Good question. All right. Camino Short Platte on 66th divides a parcel into two lots for single-family development. They received their final land use approval and the civil permit has been issued. I don't want to say it wrong.
It's Gustafson or Gustafson. Unfortunately, after about three years, we still don't know the correct pronunciation of the last name.
I'll just be honest. So this is a townhome project, divides the property into six parcels for six townhomes. They've received their final land use approval. Building permits have been issued, and they're just awaiting final inspections. Ballenger Park Hall Creek Restoration Project, that will be constructed by the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. So the city is going to be doing a habitat restoration project for 16.4 acres in the north end of Ballenger Park. It will include a boardwalk as well, and they are expected to start construction May of this year. Terrace View Estates Fee Simple Subdivision. So this is another townhome project for 18 townhome units across three buildings. They received their preliminary land use approval and civil permits have also been issued. 47 North, which you may know as a former PNT Town Homes project. This project is 16 townhomes, includes five live-work units, and is across three buildings. There's internal access and frontage improvements on 56th Avenue West. They are just awaiting final inspections, and their units currently for sale. The Primera Campus Renovation Master Site Plan Project. They have five different buildings that are going to be constructed over multiple years. And in 2022, they started construction on the Orcus Building. So that one is currently under construction.
We have an open house next month.
Nice.
Yeah, they're waiting final certificate of occupancy for Orcus.
PSI Mini Storage. This project was completed last year. It's a three-story storage unit building and frontage improvements along 70th Avenue West was part of this project. Terror Station Building Two is a transit-oriented development and a mixed-use building. They have, let's see, 168 residential units, ground floor commercial space, access from Van Rye Boulevard, stream and wetland restoration, pedestrian trail, and there's land dedicated for future Gateway Plaza and 236th. So this project was completed and they started leasing for residential and commercial properties in May 2022. Terror Station Building Three, adjacent, also a mixed-use building. They started construction last year in April. Yeah. Bellorum Cottage Homes. This is redevelopment of a 10-unit cottage housing development. They have detached garages and communal open spaces. They are awaiting final inspections, and units are currently for sale. The Waco Short Platte Project subdivided three residential lots for the purpose of constructing two detached single-family homes. This platte does include a critical area tract with deep slopes and tree protection. Each home has a driveway off of 228th. This project was completed.
And I believe that home that you're looking at was sold, was sold last week. So, just a little update.
Willow Glen Town Homes Fee Simple. So this is a one-acre property that was subdivided into 40 townhomes across six different buildings, includes frontage improvements and internal access. Their civil permits have been issued and building permits are ready to issue. Candela, we've also talked about tonight. This is an eight-story multifamily, commercial mixed-use building, adjacent to the Sound Transit site. They've received their site plan approval and are currently under civil review. They're scheduled for, to submit their building permits next week.
Just add, for you new folks, we zoned this to allow them to go up to 12 stories.
Yeah.
And they chose to not utilize that, which is.
But they're at eight. So we're making headway.
Which is more than nice. So it's, you know.
We're making headway here. We're inching up.
But, you know, the idea of this, this being the closest lot to the light rail station.
Right.
It would make sense to have it as dense as possible. You know, there's a lot of different factors, and to determine why they chose to only go that, you know, cost is a big thing with materials.
It's, a lot of it is also financing, is what a lot of people are running into of just lent, getting the lending to go up that, that high, provides some difficulty. Started out as six stories, and so we were not what we were hoping for, at least going, maxing it out, but at least we got up to eight. So it's a start of people starting to get past the six mark that we've seen historically, so.
Did, did they end up buying more land on that block?
They have, yeah, property to the east. They've been accumulating some of those parcels for a potential Phase Two. But, yeah, so that's kind of where that's at. Haven't received any applications or anything like that. It's just kind of something that's been happening over the last two or three years of people by purchasing those lots to the east.
And then to backtrack a little bit, on the Terror Station ones, was, I thought you said there might, there was some discussion about maybe doing another building down there?
Yeah, we'll, we'll show you actually a, a street vacation that is being proposed.
Oh, okay.
Coming, no, that's okay, because it's not intuitive. But there's a street vacation in process, which would then potentially allow for a fourth building fronting 236th across from this Candela development, actually. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Because that, that's what, I mean, there, I remember even during the, the last Town Center update, there were discussions and questions about, would that even be doable? You know, just with the slopes and everything, and, you know, a pie in the sky is, yeah, put a building there, and it's nice to see that. Other people had that idea as well.
So Sierra Construction, who constructed the first two buildings, but don't own or manage them, but they're responsible for actual ownership and construction of the third building that's going up right now. They're proposing to do the street vacation and potentially develop a, a fourth building right there as part of that.
Do we know how many stories they?
I haven't seen anything. We're still at the, we're baby stepping it right now with the street vacation, but, yeah.
Because the, again, these two, the reason why, you know, for new folks, the, why these are so important, because these, these are almost like the proof of concept. Once, once people start seeing these, then other developers who, I keep saying, we're just not on their radar yet. They're, they're still focused on Seattle with all, and, and, and shoreline with all this, all the rezoning that happened there. But, pretty soon, you know, they're gonna start running out of easily acquirable land, and they're gonna be looking for the next area. We're the next in line, and all of a sudden, we're gonna get a lot more attention, a lot more development, a lot more competition, who might be willing to, you know, fully utilize the zoning that we're allowing. And, you know, new players in the game, which, which is, which perfectly leads into, you know, what our hopes and dreams have been. But also with more, when you have a more robust development community in here, showing interest in making these proposals, then in a way, it's a little bit more fair and equitable, because you don't have that one developer who's dominating the conversation and dominating sort of the political clout, which in a way, we've kind of had in the past. So it'll be nice to sort of see it more democratized and, a little bit, a little bit more fair.
I'd also like to provide a little comment on the sort of eight versus 12-story thing. So in the building codes, you can use stick frame construction with like a solid concrete base or a few stories, up to about seven stories, or eight, depending how you interpret the code. But then after that, you have to go to fully non-combustible construction, either mass timber, which is still sort of new, or like a concrete building. And so a lot of local developers, like if you look at Lynwood, they've actually zoned for like much higher buildings, almost kind of like a Vancouver. But what they're getting is stuff like this, because of various reasons, probably. So if we wanted something that was a little bit more like this, like, we might need to look a little bit more clo- or something that wasn't so much like this, but also maybe more like, you know, towers or something, something that's taller than eight stories, we would probably need to look a little bit more closely at our zoning regulations. Like if, you know, 12 stories is enough for a concrete building to pencil out. And also, we'd need to reach out to more kinds of developers who would be able to build those taller buildings, or have a history of building those taller buildings in the past, and hear kind of what is possible to make one of those buildings happen. I know in the U District, they've got a number of sort of taller buildings or concrete construction coming up. So if that's something where we want to see something taller than eight stories, we would probably need to take another look at some of the zoning and some of the development that's been happening there to see what sort of makes things pencil.
Yeah, a while ago, I mean, this, when I say a while, you gotta remember, I've been on the Planning Commission for decades. At a time, you know, we talked about what would pencil out, what wouldn't pencil out. And, you know, the, the six-story, you know, the five-over ones, that, that sort of hits that developer sweet spot where they can maximize their profits for that. And then anything higher, you have to start to do concrete, then they're not gonna start seeing that profit margins again until they hit about 15, 16 stories. Now, this was a couple of years ago, so those numbers might be a little bit different now. Well, most of the time zoning doesn't allow it. That's why when we were going through this last process, I was, I was all for actually having zoning even be higher in that area to allow that type of building. But with the 12, what the hope was, is that we would see more people willing to take a chance on that mass timber, because it, you gotta remember, this was a couple of years ago when we were having these discussions, and mass timber wasn't as well-known as it is now, and it hasn't been tested. Now you're starting to see, you see it and hear it everywhere now. A couple of years ago, that still wasn't the case. So people were like, I'm not kind of sure about it. But, you know, the idea is, is that with mass timber, you could do 12 right now. I know, I remember when Logan was on the Planning Commission, he would talk about, you know, when you, when you go up above six-two, that also changes things with the fire code requirements, and that, that is just as much as a deterrent as, as well. Sometimes I wish he was still here, because he, he knew all that stuff off the top of his head. But as we move into the future, people get more comfortable with mass timber and see how successful it is. We might see things at the 12. But if the demand is there, you know, at some point in the future, maybe have to revisit those, those heights, you know. Most would say it makes sense if you're right next to the light rail station, the more height, the better, but, you know.
I must say, to clarify, we do allow up to 12 stories in Town Center One right now. So we wouldn't need to change zoning for 12 stories.
Right. I think Nick's saying to go above 12 stories potentially. Chair Batista, sorry. I'm getting informal. But I think there's been a lot of changes even since that conversation, and it might be good to have Matthew Giselle, the building official, and David Sherman, the fire marshal, because there's alternatives to, that have been done in the last couple of years to make that easier for people to go above that six and eight. That wasn't really readily there even three, four years ago. So, and there's additional changes in building and fire codes as well. So it's something that we're cognizant of and just trying to make sure that we have provisions in place. So it's, I don't know that it's zoning so much as it's building and, and fire code, and trying to make a way for people to be able to, to do that. Because like you said, I've worked in jurisdictions where there's no, there's no building height, and nothing gets built, you know, that it's been more of building and fire codes and, and cost of, of having people go up. But we're, we're starting to see people dip their toe in a little bit more, particularly in areas like ours, and not like, oh, we're in the U District, so, you know, that type of thing. But in some of the other areas where we're starting to see that a little bit more. So it might be good to have them come in and talk a little bit about some of those changes.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, to continue, heard a lot about this project tonight. So I probably don't need to go into that. But yes, as you heard, they are planning to be open for service in 2024, the Link Light Rail. Ace's Poker is a major tenant improvement project on 220th Street. So they'll be renovating the existing poker room, the dining room, bar, offices and kitchen, and reconfiguring existing restrooms into code compliant spaces. So this project is currently under construction. Mountain Lake Village Site Plan Development. This is a proposal on 56th, the old Rogers Market site, to develop 301 apartment units, including, and also 5,260 square feet of retail. So mixed-use building, and we're currently processing the land use application. Chain Lake Express Wash is a site development plan, a proposal to develop 4,102 square foot car wash on 44th Avenue West. We're currently processing the land use application.
Okay, I, I gotta say something. So the, for this lot, is, is this owner, developer aware that we're looking at completely rezoning what's allowable there?
No, I mean, they've, they've vested a land use application.
Okay, so they're far enough?
Yeah, they're, they're far enough along. In saying that, this is a really tricky site. There's some topography issues if you go out there. So we'll see how this, you know, works its way through the land use application process. But once somebody submits something that meets code compliance, then they're considered vested for, you know, our review, so.
I mean, I get, I get it. They're, they're, they can do whatever they want at this point. I just didn't know if they're even aware that come three, six months from now, something completely possible would have been doable at that lot that would currently
Sure. These folks do car washes that are coming in to do this car wash, so.
It's a weird spot to put a car.
Yeah. I mean, there's challenges.
There's a pretty big tree there.
Ingress, egress, yeah, topography issues, kind of getting in and out. And then, you know, the things that come with a car wash, vacuum spots and even our design standards, you know, for different things. So it's not, it's not necessarily easy in this location. I would just say that, that, you know, it presents some challenges, I guess, so.
You think they'd be willing to put apartments over the car? I just, I'm from a land, I'm, I'm sorry. I've lived with this, this piece of property my whole life. I mean, I mean, granted, it's been a law firm and kind of a gravel parking lot forever, but the potential, it's just been sitting there for decades.
Yeah.
And, and honestly, if you guys want to know why I get frustrated that comp plans and, or not comp plans, but like sub-area plans get, getting pushed off, or just areas got, keep getting ignored, this is the result of that. Things like this squeak through before we've had a chance to get over there and really get our ducks in a row and say, no, this is, this, we have, we have a focused intent for what we want this neighborhood to look like, what type of buildings we want, what type of uses we want. A car wash, I would, would not have been on the top of my list. And, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm, they're vested.
Go ahead.
I'm just, that, that is discouraging. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
And the 236th Street Vacation that Kristi alluded to earlier, this is a proposal to vacate part of 236th Street for Whiskey Six and Sierra M L T to combine that parcel with adjacent parcels they already own within TC One and adjacent to the terror station developments for future mixed-use development. So we are processing the street vacation application currently.
I have a question. It's a little hard for me to see, what portion is being vacated?
So right here, this area vacation, so it's everything above this line, this dark black line, well, up to the existing right-of-way. So this area.
Yeah, that little piece right there.
Okay, I didn't realize that wasn't private property.
For, for those of us who remember when it was still Evergreen Elementary, is that wedge of land where the road kind of twists down the hill?
I, yes, it is. Coming from the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
That's why that's public right-of-way, because it was, it used to, there used to be an access road to get to the elementary school right there.
Yeah, so they purchased that adjacent home and you can see like fronting on 236, we have way more right-of-way than, than we need with, you know, the street improvements that were done for 236 and the pedestrian accessway. So there's some extra property there as well, so potential to, to do something with that property down the line.
Look forward to seeing the application that comes in for it.
Yeah.
So that does bring up an interesting point. So in that area, I guess, because the other terror station developments, it's not underground parking, they have above-ground parking anyway. Right there, affronting 236, would they, would they, because I know part of the costs of what, why underground parking is so expensive because of the, it's actually, you know, underground and shoring and ventilations, where in this case, we're really more concerned of 236 and above, what's happening, you know, below grade, you know, it's going down a slope, so it's going to be exposed any, anyway. So I'm assuming any kind of development would just be kind of like, kind of like a half-open-air parking garage.
It would, yeah, I mean, it would depend on location. It's just like the other buildings where you have the entry to the parking around the back, so frontage is, you know, you have that commercial storefrontage and you can't really see as you're coming into the parking for the, for the parking of the structures.
So urban design hats on right now. In a theoretical hypothetical development like that, would we still be able to say, okay, yeah, it's, it's kind of open-air parking on one or two sides there, but it can't just be bare concrete, you're still going to have to spruce it up a little bit?
Yes, I mean, and that's what we've done for Building Three as well. Yeah, you just can't have a wall, wallow concrete. Yeah, when we were going through Building Three, we were very cognizant of maybe what was approved on Building One. And so always striving to get better design as we move forward and, you know, that's one of my number-one priorities. Because in these instances particularly, it's going to set the stage for everything that gets developed in the city. So Candela Development, right as you come into town, terror station, you know, everybody sees it as they're rolling through town, those things matter. And if we don't uphold a certain standard when we're going through design review, then it's going to make it increasingly hard for us to, you know, hold a, a certain standard.
I'm still all for allowing for some sort of bonus for businesses that move in to get creative with their signage, you know, maybe offer them a tax break for a year or two, just to get some really good, unique neon signage instead of the boring.
Yeah, cool, neon signage is super cool. Yeah, agreed.
I have another question about this one, sorry. It's, it's, it's an important site, I guess. So immediately to the south, there's 237th, which is kind of on the south side of the block. And I don't remember, is that, does that right-of-way continue through or is that a, like will 237th eventually potentially wind up dead-ending where it currently sort of stops like just south of this property here?
237th.
That would be the road that ended up snaking down the hill.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's not going to, basically, my understanding is, is that would stop and not come down the hill.
Okay, so yeah, everything to the south of this is privately owned then?
Yeah, I mean, there would have to be an appropriate turnaround if you're not having it come, I mean, not that this is kind of appropriate for a turnaround area down here currently. You know, it's kind of like, ah!
It's already blocked off to the public, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so, but it never used to be for a while. You could like drive down there.
Really?
Yeah, for a little spell, but I've been down there a couple of times. But yeah, I mean, when you're just blocking off a road, I know it's done, but it would seem like there would be some, it'd be better to have some accessibility for people to be able to turn around if they got down to the end of the road. Without like, oh, I'm turning around in your driveway every time for the people that live right there, so.
Also, this is like more, this is maybe out of our scope is the planning commission, but I think a connection like the, one of the things I'm really glad to see about Building Four is that like it's kind of half, like a quarter of a mile down the hill from the transit center. And so connections both up to the neighborhoods around it and then also to the transit center are kind of hard. I think this is a great building location and I think it has potential to build both of those connections, but the connection back to the neighborhood down 237th or something, I think is probably going to be a little challenging. If those buildings are big and long, sort of like the other buildings are, it might just bind it being a wall. So I'm interested to see how we wind up treating that end of 237th. And even if it's not like a car road, if it was like a pedestrian pathway that like connected back to the transit center and sort of connected that, I think, you know, whatever they can do to sort of help ease that, we should probably help them along.
And I think there's two pedestrian connections as accessing from 236 to 237 that are part of the Town Center Plan with that same.
We talked about it.
Yeah, same thing of where we're putting, trying to put in those connections, because you're exactly right. That's what the city's really lacking is, you know, we have these long blocks and then we have no connection, even if those connections are pedestrian, of where we have trail accessibility connecting these things. So we're truly multimodal where people can ride a bike, people can walk to that connection versus, you know, having to do that thing and, oh, forget about it, I'll just drive my car.
Yeah, yeah, I think they've, I think they've done a good job with like that corner where Zeke's is coming and then they've got Terror Station Three that's coming up there. So I think they like have the ability to make something really cool here. So I'm interested to see what they, how they wind up solving that challenge.
Yeah, and I haven't seen anything, you know, kind of of what they're contemplating as of yet. I think it's going to depend also on how much property they can get going up the hill, so stay tuned.
All right. 213th Place Rockery Repair. This should say the status completed last year. There was a rockery that failed and, or I'm not sure when it failed, but they were able to repair that last year on 213th. Forest Crest Athletic Club, short subdivision. This is a proposal to divide 0.45 acres into three lots to construct new detached single-family homes. And we are processing the land use application.
And then another FYI for you new folks, Forest Crest has owned this land for years and for years, they wanted to expand their club and for years, the neighborhood fought it and fought it and fought it until finally they gave up and said, fine, you won't let us expand our club, we'll just build houses.
I'm not sure that they gave up, we had a pre-op.
Yes, they had a, a pre-op for.
Expanding the club.
They're still trying.
They're still trying, yeah.
Yeah, a rezone.
There's, there's only two times in all the years I've been on the planning commission where I've seen neighborhoods come out in force. Melody Hill and this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a zoning text amendment, I misspoke.
Zoning text amendment, yeah. So they came in for a pre-op, just looking at, still looking at potential alternative ways. But in the interim, they've subdivided a lot of property that they had homes on and have been in the process of redeveloping them at least as long as I've been here. And I think they might have done a couple before I got here, so.
Every couple of years, something seems to pop up.
Yeah, it happens periodically, so, yeah, that's that.
Any questions about any of the projects I went over tonight?
Several. Sorry, sorry, everyone. I can let someone else ask questions if they want first though.
What?
Oh, if someone else wants to ask questions as opposed to me just asking a lot of questions, please feel free.
Does anybody have any question, I mean, questions may come up from your questions, so maybe after everyone, we'll kind of, we'll kind of stop. But yeah, go ahead.
All right, so I'm going to start with Candela. I know this is kind of a critical link in a lot of ways. I know the Parks Department for Veterans, at some point on the planning commission's agenda, maybe it was a few years ago, there was some discussion of development standards for the edge of this park and possible developer incentives. Has that, what have discussions been like that, where, been like for how this building bounds on Veterans Park?
So there wasn't anything officially adopted per se. One of the things that we did when we got the application is we brought in Makers Architecture to help us with design review because of the importance of this development. So trying to make sure we had some professional help in getting the best design that we could under the standards that we have. So I know there's been a lot of discussion on that interface, there isn't a lot of regulatory teeth, I would say, on being able to do that. So I don't know if it's going to be great, but it's the best that we could try to do under the situation. So there is a wall that's currently there on that north side and there's a wall on the east side. Those two walls are going to stay as part of the development. You can see the start of, I mean, it's not how the trail's going to look, but you can see where that trail off of 236 is coming. I'm on the left side of our slide there, that's going to be where the actual trail connection starts to link up to Veterans Park. And so right now, there's a wall that is a big topographic difference between the Transit Center and this site. The bus loop is basically going to be on grade with the trail and that wall will come down. And so that's some work that's going to start here shortly. And then you can see where there's some mechanical equipment as part of the Sound Transit Project that's kind of right there abutting 236th. So, yeah, it's kind of an interesting interface with the park because of the, the topography for the trail connection and even just the backside of that building. You kind of go up on the east and you go up on the north quite a ways topographically, so.
So you've got a blank wall facing the Transit Center. It looks like there's some vegetation maybe at the bottom of it. And then there's a trail that goes from 236th up to where we'll wind up connecting to the bike trail or the, the, the new Veterans Park pedestrian trail.
Yeah, and this is not final landscaping design and this is not really how the trail is. So there's an area reserved for that trail, which is going through appraisal with Sound Transit. There's three parties involved because the majority of the trail is the responsibility of Sound Transit per their conditions of approval. The hearing examiner told the city, they, they're, we're basically responsible for one-third of the trail where we wanted the trail to extend to 236. So that's our obligation. Once Sound Transit gets the property for the easement on the Candela property, then they will give that easement to the city. But Sound Transit's responsible to construct essentially two-thirds of the trail and the city is responsible to con, to construct about a third of the trail. And it's been designed and will do final landscape design and such with the civil review. So after the land use, which is site plan approval is done in conjunction with civil review, that's when land, final landscaping and that type of stuff also gets taken care of.
Okay, how wide is that trail?
What's that?
How wide is that trail, out of curiosity?
It's a 12-foot easement with an eight-foot trail.
Okay, a little narrow, but.
Yeah, a little narrow.
The easement's wide enough. The, aside from a big blank wall facing the park where the park sort of plummets in its cliff, do you know how the rest of the building interfaces of the park? Like, can I walk through that space in the middle of the buildings and go to the park? Or can some of the parkers do that?
Yeah, you can't because the topographic grade is, that's a secondary access through the middle of the buildings that goes into basically an open space plaza for, that required for the development. And there are some stairs that basically go up, but there's not a connection point from that mid-property back to the park. The connection point is the trail. And then on the far east side, that's access ingress, egress to go to the underground parking.
Okay, so when I'm standing in the park and I'm looking at the backside of this building, what do I see?
You'll see a portion of the building from the park because the park is higher than this site.
Okay, and that's pretty much just the windows of the apartment at this point? Any exposed parking and maybe also part of the, the wall that currently?
There's, yeah, you, if you're standing in the park, you won't really see the wall because you'll be at a grade that's higher than, than the building, right? So you'll see a portion of the backside of that building. You won't see any parking back there at all because the parking's going to be under the building.
And do any of the apartments access the park?
Not directly. They'll access the trail, they'll have a connection to the trail, to the park, but they won't access the trail or the park directly.
Okay, and that trail to the park is the one that's on the side there?
On, on the west side.
Okay, so I think when we, I remember being in the parks, you know, there was a, we were kind of looking at the connection and we were kind, and this is back when they were doing the Veterans Park Master Plan. We were kind of concerned about what this adjacency would look like. And there's like a specific building in Redmond that backs up to this nice park, but like does not have any connection to it at all. And what I'm hearing is that it sounds like we've also built that here. So, you know, I think maybe this opportunity has passed because they're about to have their permits, but like, it's going to be real, like, I, I would almost fast-track this like really quickly of finalizing what those like connection points look like and like doing the work that the planning commission, I think, was tasked with a few years ago of like developing those park edge standards. Because I think this falls short of sort of what, a lot of what was envisioned when I was listening to the Parks Department here. So as, you know, they develop Phase Two, as they do other things, I think we really need to look, like kind of prioritize that because the rubber's starting to meet the road here. And we're starting to get big blank walls on the Forest Park that's right next to the Transit Center. And that concerns me and I think. And that concerns me, and I think it's gonna concern a lot of other people when they see this thing go in.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, there's, yeah, there's, if we don't have a requirement, you know, it's, you can you can want something, but it's taking that next step. I, I would say lost opportunity on this site, but the adjacent site, there could be an opportunity. There also needs to be a linkage in the trail plan on the properties that directly links it, and then there would be a requirement to, you know, provide that linkage to the park.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. Looked like you were about to push your
Oh, well, this is more of a, just a curiosity question.
Yeah.
The retail space on all sides of the building, or is it just that 236th side?
It's on 236th, and it's not required to be along the entire frontage. So it's part of the Town Center Plan and doing the economic evaluation. On the old Town Center Plan, there was ground floor commercial required essentially everywhere. And what folks came back with was, you guys have way too much required commercial development. What'll happen is it won't get developed, and then the spaces won't fill up. And so what we did was, we have areas in Town Center where ground floor commercial is required. And then we have areas where ground floor commercial can be located but not required. So in this case, they have three storefront spaces on this development where they'll have commercial development, but none of it was required by code. So that's kind of where we're at. In the case of the old Rogers Market site, we do have the two corners, the southwest and southeast corners, where a commercial was required on those corners. And then we had a lot of other areas where it used to be required in the Town Center Plan that City Council eliminated some of those corners. And the reason for those, the thought behind that was just having those corner spaces activated for pedestrian-friendly activity and kind of keep people going, you know, up and down the streets and having that activated space. Fortunately, they have put some of those pedestrian commercial activities on the front of the building, so. But along the other sides of the building, there's no commercial. It's all residential.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you describe the retail spaces in there? You mentioned there are three spaces on the 236th. Where are they in this picture, and how big are they?
So I know that, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna put in them, but there's two, there, these are kind of two separate buildings actually that are combined and one foundation and one underground parking. So it's kind of one building with two spires. And so closest to us, you can see that ground floor space. There's two commercial, proposed commercial spaces. I know they're contemplating one of them to be like a coffee-type, you know, space. And then there's other one on, another commercial space further down on the other spire. And then part of that frontage is ground floor lobby and other amenities space on that, on that frontage right there.
Okay. And you mentioned it was about 5,000 square feet total, or that was?
Yeah, I'm, it says it on here, and I can't remember what the, yeah, 5126. And I can't remember what the exact square footages are for the, for the spaces.
Okay, interesting to see what they provide when retail is not required. And then my final question, sorry, everyone, about this building is the eastern side of it. If they're looking to expand in that direction, like, so one, maybe just to digress a little bit, one comment I have about a lot of these buildings that are going up is they are way too long. Like, you kind of wanna be able to walk around a building in my mind if you're sort of in an urban space, like, within a few minutes. Like, and so more than about 250 to 300 feet on a side starts to make it really more of an obstacle as opposed to part of like the granularity of a city. Which is why I'm disappointed to hear that you can't walk through the middle thing. I think they, I think this could have been a great, like, you know, how the building connects to the park, how you can like, like, they've, they've set up the, they've set up like sort of the, the sketch of greatness and then fallen a little bit short, I think. But they're still on the eastern side of the building if they expand into Phase Three. Like, I'd be interested to see sort of what the interface between the buildings looks like, if anything.
Yeah, I mean, there's a to- a topographic difference, and there's no way, because that's the ingress egress for parking, that they could basically connect it in any way to this site. And I'm not, at this point, we have nothing to show what they would be proposing to do over there, so.
Yeah, I think that those connections to the park, and this probably will expand into however, like, if you've got private development on a park, like, I could see it becoming more of like a comprehensive plan thing we look at. But I think the development standards as we get to this park are pretty important to look at. That's all the questions I had on this building. I had a question on another building, sorry.
Does anybody else have any?
I do not.
Good question. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so Mount Lake Village, the one that going up at the former Rogers Market site. Can you talk to me about the retail that's going in this one?
Okay, so retail is being proposed on the southeast and the southwest corners, which abuts 232nd. So across the street from the city's landmark Double D Meats here, that's kind of looking at that portion of the building. You can see 5200 square feet. I believe one of them was 4,000 something square feet, and the other one is like 2,600 square feet.
Okay, that's pretty good size for like a small cafe or something. This is better than I was expecting, so I'm pretty happy to see that. But there is, like, when I talk to my neighbors in the neighborhood, I think, you know, a lot of them really miss Rogers and maybe not be fully aware that this is probably not going to become a supermarket. And when we see development like this happening where like, you know, I mean, it's been seven years or eight years or 10 years by the time this thing gets built, but like, in a way, we have lost a critical neighborhood service. And this is one of the better opportunities to replace it. So I think there might be some panic when we start to see these things going away and, like, more people coming in, but not as many services coming in. So I don't really have an answer to this. Maybe this isn't a question, or actually, it is a question, but it's probably more of an economic development question. Like, you know, how are we going to make sure that, you know, there, there aren't that many, there are some easily developable sites in Mount Lake Terrace, but there aren't that many in the Town Center. And this one, you know, while it will have some services, will not have like one of the really critical services that it has replaced. And so how do we get that back in there? I know you've been working for years and years. I remember you and Stefan mentioning this and like strategizing around this, but are there any updates to like, sort of how we attract those businesses? How do we get the development to like actually provide the space that we need for this kind of thing?
Yeah, grocery stores are probably one of the trickiest land uses. So when we adopted the code, we made provisions to allow for a grocery store to occur. It's something that we hear all the time from the community that they want a grocery store downtown, no doubt about it. Other than just basically requiring a grocery store and locking the development up, that it can only be a grocery store, all economic development advice is residential leads commercial. And so when a grocery store is looking to locate somewhere, they want residential units that are gonna support a grocery store. And so I know there's gonna be disappointment that, oh, there's not a grocery store here. But there is a reason there's not a grocery store here. We've had a proliferation of grocery stores all around Mount Lake Terrace, which if a grocer's gonna come in here, they're gonna look at all the competition and all the big box and the large grocery stores. There's a reason that Rogers couldn't compete and, and left Town Center. So it's pure economics, and the only way that we can try to continue to entice a grocery store is try to get the densities that we need to have somebody come in where a grocery store pencils out.
Yeah, this is one of those chicken and the egg things where I know back during the sort of economic development portion of the Town Center Plan, we heard that, oh, if you have too many, too much commercial requirements on the ground floor, you'll never wind up getting development. Or, you know, the, the commercial will sit empty. But then if all of our easily developable, developable residential sites wind up filling up without these critical services, what we've done is just created a massive, like, problem, I think, because you still have people who are living in the place, but now it's very hard to get the services that they need in the place. And so now they like all individually have to go buy cars and drive down to, you know, Thriftway or whatever. And so this, you know, in my mind, is another sort of like, you know, if the code is living, like, I think this is one of the things that we might want to revisit as a commission of how do we get these critical services in our neighborhood centers? Because, like, you know, it is a bit of a chicken and an egg thing, but like, it's also one where if you know, things build out and there's not critical, like, there, there's not enough space to actually provide the services that are necessary. Like, you sort of have to build it in in advance to let those things happen if development leads, if density leads these services. So I think that's something we, you know, I don't know whether it's in the sub-area plan, but in my mind, this is sort of a, you know, as these sites but get bought up and developed, like, this is also like a very like crucial and time-sensitive thing we need to look at as a planning commission.
I, I would say that, you know, we've had developers coming in the past that would talk about, you know, kind of their ideas for this, you know, site in the past, and you know, or just in development in general, and they would say, they always are talking to grocery stores. They're always talking to certain types of businesses. And like Christie said, what, what they're just hearing from the grocery stores is just, there just, just wasn't enough people to justify it. So it's gonna take a while for the Town Center to get built out to the, to the levels that could support what we think of as probably a traditionally sized grocery store. But that isn't to say that maybe in the interim a smaller scale grocery store moves in, something more that you would see in more in an urban environment. Where you're not looking at like what we have with the QFC or, I still call it Albertson's, it's forced to have it, but the Safeway, you know. It's not gonna be to that size, but maybe something half or a third of that size that would be feasible with the population base that we are looking at for the next, you know, three to five to seven years before things really start to pick up. And then, you know, the, the other problem is, is that you a grocery store is a big piece of infrastructure. You have to have full intention to have that be a grocery store when you're in the design phase. It's, it's really hard to retrofit something like that after the fact. I mean, you're just dealing, you know, with just, you know, the the infrastructure, the HVACs, the ceiling heights, the loading docks, you know, it's just, you gotta have that. That's gotta be your, in, in, in your, in your plans from, from day one, so. It, you know, it might be a while, but you know, I, I, I understand the, you know, the, the frustration of not having that there. I understand the frustration of not having an actual Town Center. I remember when there was businesses, you know, before the arson
Yeah, for sure.
And wiped out three-quarters of our Town Center. We had a thriving Town Center with lots of businesses that were, that were making a go of it, even though the mall had just opened. They were still surviving. People still liked it, but then once once those buildings burnt down, only, only the building that, getting a little history lesson for you guys. The building that has Double D in it, back when it used to be Neil's Nightcap, before it's whatever, the Diamond Knot now, that was the only building that got rebuilt after the fire. It didn't burn down completely. So Double D went out for a bit, they redeveloped, and then, and then they came back in. The only other business that came in was Neil's Nightcap. They couldn't even afford it. They came in, they rebuilt, they reopened. They blew, they blew their budget. They went out of business. All the other buildings never got rebuilt. We got the Gymn, the, the gymnast
Yeah.
thing instead, because that was allowed for some reason. That wiped out a whole, whole set of businesses, you know, there that, that, that didn't get rebuilt. So it's, you know, you, I mean, you're thinking of the, the grocery store being gone in a near-term thing. Imagine some of the, what they feel, you know, some of those residents who've been lifelong residents here, have been here 30, 40, 50 years, how much they have lost, and none of it has come back.
Right, and a lot of it kind of makes sense in a certain way. Like, a lot of that stuff moved over further east of the park to 44th and 228th and some of those other places. So as Christie was mentioning, with all the competition kind of around and not much happening in Town Center, like, you know, there's a lot of competition, it sort of hollows out. But we're looking at putting a lot of people, you know, not just here necessarily, but maybe possibly through the comprehensive plan and some of the sub-area plans on these places. So we're having developments. So we've got this sort of near-term problem where we have the we're getting the people to support these things, but in the same time, we're not like, we're, we're building our way, we're building in such a way that we're not creating the space for the services they need once they happen. Once those people happen. And so I think that's like, you know, I think we have a little bit of time on Town Center. Like, you know, there are several other large sites that could go under redevelopment, but this is also gonna be a problem, I think, in other neighborhood centers and sub-areas where we, you know, know we're gonna have the people. We also need to make sure the space is going to happen. How do we do that?
And I think, like Christie said, you know, we, we can we can have it be a, an allowable use in the code. But we can't force them to say, oh, no, we're only gonna let you build your thing here if, if you put in a grocery store.
Well, the space for a grocery store, not a grocery store. Like, the, the space, you know, can fill out as it happens, but like, there needs to be a way to make the space before the grocery store happens.
Yeah. Yeah, that's probably a, a discussion for another time.
Yeah, but I think it's a discussion we need to have, so. Just to summarize from my two questions, my many, sorry, I've talked a lot, but I think the two things we probably wanna advance a little bit faster are park, the, the park and development interface, kind of looking at that a little bit closer. And then also this sort of chicken and egg question of how do we get the spaces for what we need? And maybe that's incentives, maybe that's regulations. I'm not sure what that looks like. But I think those are two things that we need to look at that are kind of burning right now.
Just to sort of follow Adam's point, I think that situation might be a bit ex- well, I think people in the community wants the, the little shop there that's on 236th and, like, at, at the Town Center, once that gets knocked down. And then I know the, the other little community store, like grocery store across from the Arco on, what is that, 56th? Once those two things disappear, like, a lot of people do use those, utilize those spaces as their grocery stores. And once they are gone, I think, you know, as has been discussed, a lot of people in the community, especially in, you know, this sort of Town Center area are gonna really notice it. And that's gonna be even more of a, a, a what for, you know, if not a grocery store, something, something similar. Thank you.
I, I disagree with that. I don't, I think that store is a beer and cigarette store. I mean, I, I want, I like to see those corners, both of those corners, go, go. You know, I mean, you, I, I lived here 27 years, you know, when Rogers, you know, I know a lot of people liked it. I'm, I think I went into Rogers once or twice in my whole life here.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, 'cause, you know, you, you have QFC, you have Safeway, you have the, the market over here.
Thriftway.
Yeah, Thriftway, I mean, those stores are, were, I mean, I hate to say it, but they were much better than Rogers. You know, Rogers was not very nice. I mean, people, you know, you, you know, you get used to just walking across the street, you know, and getting your bread or your milk. But that doesn't mean it was a a nice grocery, you know, and you, like, I, when I, when I, you know, Whole Foods or Trader Joe's, something like that would be nice, you know, downtown.
Right.
If we got something like that. that would be nice, you know, downtown, you know, if we got something like that. But, you know, that, those little stores there, you know, I mean, to me, they're a nicer.
Well, I will say, I do use the 56th Street Market for things other than beer and cigarettes. The, and that's, you know, I think this also kind of comes back to like, you know, I do own a car, but I don't really like to drive very often. And so I wind up using a lot of the services that are in town center. And if Rogers were there, I would be shopping there all the time, even if it's not the best store, like, you know, there are, a lot of times where I'll like walk over to QFC or something, that's like a mile, and like, I'm a dedicated person, so I don't expect everyone else to do this. But like, it is, if we're putting a lot of people in a particular place, we sort of need to make life as convenient as possible for them, otherwise they're going to wind up driving and filling up the parking lot of QFC and filling up all the streets and things like that. And so this whole putting these services right next to the places where people are going to walk and use them, I think, you know, even if they are, you know, sort of run down, like, they still feel a very vital service that makes life possible for some people and, you know, makes life without generating traffic possible for other people. And so I think this is like, you know, for 56, if they've got a 4,000 square foot real, like a leasable space in there, I don't know what the economics are like for, so like a small convenience store, but that sounds like it could probably fit one. But I think one of these questions is sort of what are critical services in neighborhoods and how much space do they require? And what do our regulations basically tell, what can we expect from our regulations for these kind of spaces? And is it economically feasible for development to happen if they were to change? And I think that's a big discussion that we probably need to look into as we're going through all these planning exercises.
Yeah, because I think, I understand what you're saying, it does make sense that a grocery store probably wouldn't want to come into a neighborhood if they don't have enough customer base, they don't have enough people living there. So when is it, when is it enough to, what is the number of residents that we have to have in order for us to entice a grocery store on this side? I agree that Rogers was, I used to call it the super 7-Eleven, I hope nobody hears me, because it wasn't my favorite place to go, but 7-Eleven is a convenience store, so this was like a convenience store with a little bit extra to me. Is Trader, I heard you say Trader Joe's or Whole Foods would probably be an interesting thing to put in the city center. So that's not, those aren't grocery stores? We don't consider Trader Joe's and Whole Foods a grocery store? Because I would love to see a Trader Joe's in Mount Lake Terrace. I would shout it out to the world if we had a Trader Joe's in Mount Lake Terrace.
No, I think they're considered grocery stores. I think Miguel was just saying he would like to see something, something like that, that provided.
I would love, I would love a Trader Joe's.
Yeah, and I think those, I want to say they require about 10,000 square feet or so. And the number I remember hearing from people is that a full-service grocery store requires about 10,000 people. So the service area of the grocery store would need to fit about 10,000 people in there. And if I remember right, town center has about 5,000 and just in the little corner or so.
Town center maxes out at about 8,000 residents.
And that's with the new development, right? As opposed to, not including all the stuff that's around it?
Correct, correct, new development, so.
So there's probably a few thousand people, like, within walking distance, maybe about half a mile of the grocery store. So in my mind, when I do the math, and it's like, well, how many people does Mount Lake Terrace need to have? It's like, well, how many people need, you know, does it take to support everyone walking to a grocery store for like convenience? And so that's sort of like the logical, like, you know, minimum viable unit of a lockable neighborhood, I think. And I think in the town center, we probably would have that. But then, of course, we just have to make sure that we have the space for the grocery store, so that when it's economically feasible, the grocery store has a place to move into.
Where would that place be once, when it becomes economically feasible? Would it be across the street from where Rogers was? What is that, that gymnastic thing? Is that still a viable business?
I have no idea.
I don't either.
It's open, so I would imagine it's viable.
They've been, I mean, well, they used to be located in Cedar Valley, like off of 52nd years ago, like in the, in the 80s. Mid 90s, they moved up here, so it was stand-up construction. So like I said, arson, everything got burnt down, they poured the walls, raised them up. Overnight, you had this big concrete box, they moved in, they've been there since.
Yeah, they're still doing it.
25-plus years they've been here and they've been around even longer than that, so it's, you know.
Okay, that's cool.
But, I mean, it's a private business and it's, it's not, I mean, because just the nature of the architecture, it's not very open or inviting, I mean, because you have no reason to go in there unless you are a gymnast or, you know, you're a parent of a gymnast, I'm assuming it's mainly kids that are using it. So it's just, you know, it's not, it's not as integrated into the community as you would see other retail-type businesses, you know, where, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of draw, you know? I'm sure they're drawing a certain amount of population every day coming into the town, you know, to go to practices and stuff, but unless you are specifically in a gymnast-related activity, you know, you're, it's off your radar.
Yeah, and I think the, so town center is made of like properties like this, which are kind of larger and able to, you know, innately support businesses without having to do a lot of aggregation. And then there are a lot of smaller properties that you would need to work a lot at to get enough people together to get like a developable parcel that could then fit a grocery store and then all the required parking and the apartments and everything else. And I think the bigger sites are more likely to develop sooner, but they're also the ones that are most easily able to provide sort of the larger services like a grocery store. And so that's going to be like, you know, whatever large site develops next is probably going to be the next opportunity for a grocery store, I think. There's also the question of preserving businesses we already have, like, I think, you know, Double D is a grocery store, right? They're just a grocery store for carnivores, and like, I use them a lot, too. And, you know, we also need to make sure that, you know, we're not necessarily displacing, you know, long-time businesses as well, like, this is probably a discussion beyond the planning commission as well. But I think that, you know, it's critical to be able to sort of not try to displace all these businesses that are already providing the services while also bringing in more people and like customers for those businesses, but then also providing enough space for the services they will need.
Okay, thank you.
And then identifying what those services are are probably, and a planning exercise that will be beneficial for sub area plans as well as other things, as town center. So we should, I think we should do that. I would advocate for that.
And we'll just end on the fact that, just a reminder, that town center actually used to have two grocery stores, not just one. I did have one quick question here, on the rockery repair, that looked like that was kind of an emergency. So in situations like that, are they, is that like a fast-track permitting, or are they able to just go in and fix it up and let the city know at the same time, hey, we just had a, we have an emergency situation here, we need to fix this?
So there's two kinds, there's an actual emergency, and in that case, there's provisions in shoreline codes or in other codes to actually fix an emergency situation. In this case, this was not an emergency situation, so it's not fast-tracked.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there wasn't any kind of imminent safety?
Right, but, you know, definitely for capital improvements, if there's something where, oh my gosh, this is, you know, rises to the level where it's an identified need, then it's gonna jump over other projects to, you know, to get done so it can get repaired, so.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? I think we had a definitely unplanned robust discussion there.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
That's usually what happens when we do these periodic reviews.
I figured it would. My first type thing, and I'm like, this is interesting.
Especially when it's, you know, it's your first time or, for some of these projects, it's like, wait a minute, that's still on the radar?
Yeah.
What's going on?
So particularly for like subdivision or fee simple, when we go through land use and they get a preliminary approval, that's good for five years. So some of these things will be like, holy smokes, I thought I saw that a couple of years ago. And it's all depending on timing of, you know, the person that's doing the development as well. Some people will get through and just go right through a process. And then, you know, depending because of COVID or supply chain issues, or even just financial issues or whatever, some of these things will be like, hey, is that project still going to go? Yep, oh yeah, it's going, you know? So sometimes you just don't know kind of timing and situation. Sometimes we get applications and then for whatever reason, they don't happen. And other times, people have their foot on the gas and they're ready to, you know, to get stuff done. So it's just, you're going to see that it varies depending on what it is. I would say right now with, you know, interest rates kind of ticking up to, that's really gonna probably dictate what we see and don't see moving forward depending on that scenario as well. So some of, some of it is in our control and other times, it's just not in our control. It's just the way it is. It's kind of like the last town center plan in 2007, right before the Great Recession, and then, whoa, skid it off the tracks right there. But, you know, these things are, they go in cycles and, you know, different things happen in different timing. And what we heard earlier tonight is we have Light Rail coming to town, and Light Rail is the game changer for this community. It's not if, it's just when, it's timing of changes that are going to come. So part of that is us planning for those changes to occur as we move forward to the best of our ability to try to get that planning done before things happen as much as we can. Sometimes we're going to get there and sometimes we're going to be, oh, I wish we could have done this or that, so. Yep.
All right, so I don't see any other questions or comments, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number, where are we at here? Item number, actually, this is normally reversed, normally we do the director's port first, so I'm going to sue director's port first.
Okay, I just have really one thing to share, that Commissioners Betcher and Batista helped review some submittals for the comp plan update. We had four firms that submitted proposals. We reviewed those on Friday, we selected three of them to move forward for interviews the week of April 3rd. OTAC, LDC, and Burke Consulting are moving forward for interviews as finalists. I believe as of right now, and our, our schedule has changed, so I believe it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday? Is that still planned?
Yeah, earlier today, we have Monday and two interview on Thursday, but later in today, Burke had asked for revisions and they would like to have an interview on Tuesday instead of Thursday.
So we're still kind of trying to figure out our schedule of interviews for that week moving forward to accommodate when we can have all of staff participate and then also when we can get their teams, because, you know, it's made up of their firm plus any of their sub consultants that come to the interview. So still working on that, but that's the week of April 3rd for that to take place. And appreciate Commissioner Betcher and Batista providing comments, and we're still putting some questions together for, for that as well, based on that. So it was really helpful and a good discussion, I thought, of what each person gleaned differently from reviewing the proposals, which I think is what it was all about, is some things, some people caught and other things people brought up. So I think it was a good process all in all last Friday, so thank you very much for doing that. And that's really all I have for tonight.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to miscellaneous business by calling commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any future vacation plans?
Not in April.
Hearing or seeing anything? Okay, so that, we'll go ahead and declare the meeting. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
We need to.
Oh, yes, Commissioner.
Oh, did we get any kind of email or communication from Commissioner Morgan? No?
I have not received any communication from Commissioner Morgan regarding his absence today.
Okay. Yeah, if anybody wants to make a motion and excuse him, we can, or we can just handle it at the, at the next meeting maybe, because usually it's a, you know, the day later is usually when we'll hear, it's like, oh, I wasn't able to email or, or whatever, but yeah. I'll leave it up to you guys, if somebody wants to make a motion now, we can just do it right now. Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Morgan?
All right, I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Morgan from tonight's meeting. Second, okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I want to suppose it, make him show up.
I'm only joking.
All right, so with that, I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, thank you, everyone.